Session. We are. Turning off my volume. So we are. Good morning. My apologies, we're having, as you can see, we're having some technical difficulties at the front of the room. We hope you are all doing well where you are in the room. We have some members joining us. From distance, we welcome them. And we'll start with our. Want to try to roll call? Start with a roll call, Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Convening roll call for the second day, Tuesday, October 27th, 2021 of the special session. Andrew. Baker. Banks. Bear. Blackburn. Brown. Burkhardt.
Here.
Bert. Clausen. Connolly. Craig O. Duncan. Eklund. Air. Flitner. Fortner.
Here.
Gray. Greer. Helenan. Haroldson. Harshman.
Here.
Heiner. Henderson. Jennings. Kenner. Knapp. Larson Lloyd. Larson Dan. LeBeau. McGuire. Nyman. Newsome excused. Nicholas. Oakley. Ober Mueller. O'Hern. Olson. Ottman. Paxton. Provenza. Rodriguez Williams. Romero Martinez. Romero Martinez. Excused Roscoe. Schwartz. Sherwood. Simpson. Summers. Stith. Stivar. Sweeney. Walters. Washett. Excused Western. Worf. Excused Williams. Wilson. Winter. Yin. Zwanitzer. Mr. Speaker. We have fifty-six present for our excused.
Thank you very much, Chief Clerk. Today again, we're joined by Pastor Zach Brechtel, Grace United Methodist Church. Pastor Zach.
Grace and peace to each of you this morning. It's a privilege to be with you once again. Late in the Gospel of Matthew, Jesus is sitting with the religious leaders and community folks, and they're asking him questions about resurrection and taxes of all things, right? I know. But late in that, in those conversations, one of the religious leaders asked him, "What is the greatest commandment?" He didn't really want to know the answer. He wanted to trip Jesus up. But Jesus responds with, "Love God with all that you have, all your heart, your mind, and your soul," but he doesn't stop there. He continues on to say, "Love your neighbor." But he doesn't stop there. He says, "Love God with everything you have, love your neighbor and as you love yourself." There's a three-fold thing there. The greatest commandment in this life is to love God with everything we have and to take that same love to our neighbor and to ourself. And for me, and at least the Wesleyan tradition, the Methodist church, we boil that down to a couple of questions. Each day, how do we wake up and how do we do good? And how do we do no harm? And I'll leave you with that today. Let us join in prayer. Gracious and loving God, we come to this place today with a little bit of cool wind outside to wake us up. May that be reminder of your Holy Spirit present in our lives. We may not always like the chill on our face, but we know you're there. We know you wake us up. We know that you send us out into this world to do good and to do no harm. To love. To love all. May your peace settle upon our hearts today. May you guide these conversations. May you be present. And may your grace abound. We pray these things in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Oh, no, I said play ball for a good reason. We've got some more technical difficulties. We're still waiting on some amendment system, so greet yourselves, greet each other this morning. Welcome each. Welcome each other back to the house. Good morning again, members. Sorry, my opening was a little rough. Welcome to the second day of your special session, October 27th, 2021. We thank those that are joining us in the gallery and those joining us online as well. Yesterday was, I would say, a first for probably everybody in this room. I don't know if any legislature, certainly not the sixty-six, has not been through all of that process that we went through, so I thank you for your patience and compassion, which I requested yesterday because I think it was evident in the way we conducted ourselves. And truly, I had somebody email me yesterday and concerned about different components of it, and I responded back in my words, and they said, and this is the quote they sent me, "The understanding and wisdom of the whole body is all we have." "The understanding and wisdom of the whole body is all we have." So we are the body. House of Representatives, working on behalf of the citizens of Wyoming. So, understanding and wisdom. So we do thank you again for being with us. Yesterday, I want to thank the folks that were here in the gallery and attended. We had, I did not know this, as we were going, there were four overflow rooms streaming our our activities, our session, two in the first floor and two down in the in the extension. And at one point, over six, seven hundred people online. I don't know if that was the highest point, but at one point I saw seven hundred people, so quite possibly over a thousand people engaged at some point yesterday and in the occurrences here, so that's, of course, what we invite, what we hope for. And I would, I would say that almost the entirety of the interactions that were occurred were were of the decorum that we would expect. I will tell you, there were a couple incidences where unfortunately that folks did not act in accordance with what we would expect here on the floor or in the gallery or elsewhere in this, in the People's Capitol. So those are being attended to as appropriate, the best we can, and but I do thank for the majority, the greatest majority, who are very respectful. We're going to really start doing regular order business now. I've got a script and first up is General Committee Report.
Your General Committee reports that the Journal of October 26th, 2021 has been read and recommend that it be approved. Signed Representatives Haroldson and Provenza.
Thank you, Chief Clerk. Messages from the Senate.
Message number two, Mr. Speaker, this is to inform you that the Senate has failed to adopt Joint Rule 0001 Amendment to the Permanent Senate and Joint Rules of the Sixty-Sixth Wyoming State Legislature. The Senate of the Sixty-Sixth Wyoming State Legislature Special Session has voted to amend the Senate Rules of the Sixty-Sixth Wyoming State Legislature by adopting the following amendments. SR 0001, Senate Rule 18. Upon successful reconsideration, the Senate adopted SR 0002, Senate Rule 3-8. Sincerely, Ellen Thompson, Senate Chief Clerk.
All right, thank you very much, Chief Clerk. Reports from standing committees.
Your Committee Number One, Judiciary, to whom was referred House Bill 1002, Federal COVID Vaccine Mandates Prohibition and Remedies II, respectfully report same back to the House with recommendation that it do pass with following amendments. Eyes, Representatives Craig O., Lawrence, Larson, Dan, Oakley, Olson, Rodriguez Williams, Washett. Nose, Provenza, Yin, Zwanitzer. Signed Chairman Olson. And then Mr. Speaker, your Committee Number Two, Appropriations, to whom was re-refered, was referred House Bill 1002, COVID, Federal COVID Vaccines Mandate Prohibitions Number and Remedies Number Two, do pass with the following amendments. Eyes, Representatives Kenner, Larson Lloyd, Nicholas Simpson, Stith, Walters, No, Schwartz. Signed Chairman Nicholas. Mr. Speaker, your Committee Number Nine, Minerals, Business and Economic Development, to whom was referred House Bill 1001, COVID-19 Vaccine Employer Mandates. Respectfully report same back to the House with recommendation that it do pass with the following amendments. Eyes, Representatives Bear, Duncan, Air, Gray, Greer, Heiner, Western, No, Sherwood, excused Burkhardt. Signed Chairman Greer. Your Committee Number Two, to whom was referred House Bill 1001, COVID-19 Vaccine Employer Mandates, respectfully report same back to the House with the recommendation that it do pass with the following amendments. Eyes, Representatives Kenner, Larson Lloyd, Nicholas Simpson, Stith, Walters, Nose, Schwartz. Signed Chairman Nicholas. Mr. Speaker, your Committee Number Ten, Labor, Health and Social Services, to whom was referred House Bill 1006, Vaccine Requirements Limitations, respectfully report same back to the House with the recommendation that it do pass with the following amendments. Eyes, Representatives Flitner, Helenan, Ottman, Romero Martinez, Stivar, Wilson, No, Clifford LeBeau, Connolly, excused War. Signed Chairman Wilson.
Thank you, Chief Clerk. So members, we're now that order of business of bills on general file. And Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the House resolve itself into committee of the whole.
You've heard the Majority Floor Leader's motion. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no. Could the, the House will resolve it in committee of the whole. Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. And so my general file list will be House Bill 1001 and 1002. And, and I want to explain, any bill that is not specifically related to COVID-19 vaccine mandates is not going to come up on my list. And so that's, that's why those two bills and the other bill, the other bill is likely a very good bill, but it can be brought during the main session. Or you have other options, but that's my committee of the whole list, 1001, 1002. Thank you.
All right, first, your first reading for consideration is House Bill 1001. Reading Clerk, please read the bill.
House Bill 1001, COVID-19 Vaccine Employer Mandates, sponsored by Representative Greer, an act relating to labor and employment. Mr. Speaker, your Committee Number Nine, Minerals, Business and Economic Development, to whom was referred House Bill 1009, COVID-19 Vaccine Employer Mandates. Respectfully report same back to the House that with recommendation that it do pass with the following amendments. Eyes, Representative Bear, Nicholas, Air, Gray, Greer, Heiner, Western, No, Sherwood, excused Burkhardt. Signed Chairman Greer. Your Committee Number Two, Appropriations, to whom was referred House Bill 1001, COVID-19 Vaccine Employer Mandates, respectfully reports same back to the House with recommendation that it do pass with the following amendments. Eyes, Representatives Kenner, Larson Lloyd, Nicholas, Simpson, Stith, Walters, No, Schwartz. Signed Chairman Nicholas.
Just, just a quick note before I take the motion. There are bill copies up here of the, there's three bills up here. We'll take the one down that was not, is not on the Majority Floor Leader's list, but there's some bill copies up here. If people want physical copies and these run out, I know there's going to be a mad rush to the front. We'll get more. So maybe take a few with you. We'll get these distributed. So you've heard the reading of the bill. What's your pleasure? Chairman Greer.
Mr. Speaker, I move that when the Committee of the Whole Rises Report. It do so with the.
We're picking up bills, conversating, can wait. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Speaker, I move that when the Committee of the Whole Rises Report, it do so with the recommendation that House Bill 1001 do pass. Mr. Speaker, with your permission, I will do a general explanation of the bill and then dive into the Standing Committee Amendment, which will entail a deeper explanation.
Please proceed, Mr. Chairman. So members, this is a bill you've also seen. There's a Standing Committee Amendment, and I think there's also potentially some committee of whole amendments, so please proceed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Okay, members, and I'll hit a couple of the points where some of the amendments just pull out whole provisions of this bill, but what I want to do is give us a bit of an overview. This, this bill has my name on it, but this bill was created by leadership in order to be able to provide a vehicle for us to discuss a multitude of issues revolving around private employer mandates. We knew that we needed to have this discussion on this floor. So the bill generally, I will just say this. It has a statement that there won't be private employer mandates unless conditions are met. And so these conditions then lay out a map or a framework which do, which does allow, allow private employers to have a mandate. But it balances those rights of a business to manage their business with the rights of an individual. So we hear all the time, well, certain people, certain parties don't restrict business. The simple fact is every one of us, I mean, there's a lot of business people in this room. We make decisions every day in our business based upon rules and regulations and laws that are in place. So we're looking now at a state law that balances the rights of a business to move forward with the rights of an individual. So I want to just keep that in mind. To go a step further with that, because there is a mandate, and I'll go through these requirements with the mandate. One, in order to have a mandate, you have to have a good purpose for it within your workplace, and then there's amendment that deals with federal contracts, so that a significant portion of your income could be affected. Okay, so that you can continue to do business. Now, we then give in statute clear guidance to business, which is what business wants. Give us good regulation, clear regulation, consistent regulation, and we'll work with it. And then it comes down and it says exemptions for religious purposes, and you'll see the amendments that we've worked in are not religious purposes decided by a third party to determine how sincere you are in your beliefs, but rather that you have a religious exemption. Then medical exemptions certified by a physician, and we talk about an immunity exemption, and then we talk about reasonable accommodations. Work within the ADA in my business all the time, reasonable accommodations. People in healthcare were taking care of our family members July 2020. Reasonable accommodations. Okay, so that, that is how this bill is structured to reconcile this internal conflict that we have. Okay, as we move through the bill then, there, there is a provision regarding workers' compensation that the committee pulled out. After further discussion, we decided that was a bad idea and may have unintended consequences upon the the experience ratings for employers that don't have mandates. There was a healthcare worker relief fund. What we discovered is that with ARPA funds, the governor's office already has such a fund in place with, with money ready to replenish that fund, and probably more importantly, they have a formula that works very well for doing that. So again, it was unnecessary. Well, so then when you move to the Section Six, we have a preemption issue, okay? If federal law comes in and preamps state law, which it does all the time, that's why I can't have a beer going to the ballgame anymore. Just to put, put in my world. Okay, that then we're not going to put employers, we'll recognize preemption, but I can put employers in a position to say, "What law do I violate?" We'll recognize preemption, but I can put employers in a position to say, what law do I violate? Federal or state law? So we have that savings clause in there. So that is the overview. How do we balance those things? How do we allow business to continue to manage their business? But how do we respect the rights of the individual, make decisions about their body, and make it work in this crazy time we live in? So that's the overview. Let me do this now, and this is going to be a bit awkward, but it'll allow us to get into discussion or debate on some of the points. And I want to work the Standing Committee Amendment. We heard, you know, minerals, we're used to boring testimony. We had, and my committee did a wonderful job last night. We had a lot of folks testify on this on both sides of the issue. Committee worked their tail off. Very proud of them. So with that, Mr. Speaker, I think I'm trying to figure out the best way to move forward. And what I would like to do is move Standing Committee Amendment Number One to House Bill 1001.
And just to be clear, Chairman Greer, that is a corrected copy? Corrected copy. Thank you very much. Please proceed.
Members, I'm going to divide the amendment. So I sent out copies to, I gave copies to all the Minerals Committee members, Chief Clerk, Speaker, Chairman of Corporations, because I know he's got a good mind for these things. So bear with me. I'll go slow. If for some reason you missed something, just give me, give me a dirty look and I'll say it again, okay? I'll go slow, okay? So what I'm going to do is go from, so it is a three-page amendment. I'm going to go from the top of Page 1 down. So to make this easy, okay? So, Mr. Speaker, I will move to divide Standing Committee Amendment Number One. Okay, so lines 1 through 2 are going to be Division 2. Lines 4 through 8, Division 6. Bear with me, bear with me.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, I think we've got some, because our LSO staff is going to look, where's number 3 and 9, even though they're blank?
All right.
I'd like to make 1 through 3 Division 2, and then 4 through 9 Division 6. So 1 through 3 Division 2, 1, 4 through 9, 6. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just trying to be frugal. I was eliminating extra spaces, so. Okay, then lines 10 through 20. Do I need to go, do I need to start over? Okay, let me start over. Lines 1 through 3, Division 2. Lines 4 through 9, Division 6. Lines 10 through 20, Division 1. Lines 21 through 40, back to Division 2. Okay, that's because it's same subject matter, but we went back into the long title. That's why it's a bit awkward. Sorry. Okay, lines 41 through 44 is Division 3. Going to Page 2, lines 1 through 28, Division 4. Lines 29 through 31, Division 5. Lines 32 through 39 is Division 6. Lines 40 through 47 is Division 7. Okay, on Page 3, lines 1 through 2 are Division 6. So renumbering is why we've got that. And I'm keeping that same subject matter, the same effect for debate purposes. Okay, on Page 3, lines 1 through 2, Division 6. Page 3, lines 3 through 12, Division 8. Lines 13 through 15, Division 9. Line 16, Division 6. Line 17 through 25, Division 10. Lines 26 to 27, Division 6. Basically 10 amendments. Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Chairman. Please proceed as you wish.
Well, I move Division Number 1, Mr. Speaker.
All right, so to confirm Division Number 1 for the body with the chairman, that is Page 1 of the amendment, lines 10 through 20.
Okay, members, hopefully this is quick, but if we have a debate on it, fine. You will find that Division Number 1 simply removes the legislative findings.
Members, any questions on the, on the division, which is lines Division 1 of the amendment, lines 10 through 20 on the first page? Any discussion on the amendment? Madam Minority Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Yes, I do have a question. And actually, I was curious about the inclusion of findings to start with. Because in all honesty, we don't do findings typically. And the reason that I was given when I was a freshman was because findings tend to say that this is the problem and the rest of the bill is the solution. And that you'd have to agree on that this is the problem, and then that the bill was the solution. So we don't put findings there. But I am curious about the discussion that happened in the committee regarding the findings. Because while some of them I found reasonable, others of them I didn't. And so did the committee decide to get rid of them just because that was how we typically did business? Or did you discuss them? And could you give us an overview of that discussion?
Thank you, Madam Minority Floor Leader. Chairman Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The discussion was along the lines of, Mr. Chairman, why are there findings in this bill? They said, because when we discussed this with LSO, we put findings on all these bills just as we were conceptually putting things together. Mr. Chairman, we don't like findings. Committee members, neither do I, moved to strike. That was the discussion.
Further discussion, further discussion on Division 1 of House Bill 1001, Standing Committee Number 1, Division 1. There's a lot of ones. All those in favor of the division as described, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Division is adopted. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Give me just a moment. I'm going to knock out two other easy ones and then turn over some more of the discussion. Okay, members, if we turn to Page 10 of the bill. So this is the infamous Division Number 6. Okay, so, Mr. Speaker, I'll move Division Number 6 to Standing Committee Amendment Number 1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Division Number 6, to remind the body, is Page 1 of the amendment, lines 4 through 9. Page 2 of the amendment, lines 32 through 39. Page 3 of the amendment, lines 1 and 2, 16 and 26 and 27. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, Mr. Speaker.
All right, please proceed.
So, members, on the first part is a correction in the long title. The second components of the division are just renumbering sections. The main meat of this is on Page 2, lines 32 through 39, which actually is Page 10 in your, in your bill draft. And what this does, after the testimony that we received, is it eliminates this provision regarding workers' comp coverage. What the bill originally said is that if an employer has a mandate, and if an employee falls ill as a result of the vaccination, that they'll be covered by workers' compensation. We heard from businesses that we do not like presumptions like this. Also, when you look at, and members of Labor Health Committee probably know better than I do, but how your experience rating falls upon the employer and then upon the greater group, it would, it just, it just didn't make sense to have that in there. It'd be unfair to some businesses. The second component of this was what was dubbed or drafted in as the Healthcare Shortage Relief and Workers Incentive Program. This is, was a well-intentioned program, but as we, and this was one of the benefits of having our Corporations Committee take this and look at, is they're able to come in and say, look, we just heard from the Department of Health and the Maine Executive's Office, and they've already had funds in this program, significant funds, and ready to, with more federal funds available to go back into this program with a reasonable formula. The program's been working, is my understanding, and all we were going to do is create another bucket and another headache. So the committee said, move it out. So that's what this, this Amendment Number 6 does, it strikes that provision of workers' comp, which I never liked anyway, and this other program, which would have been duplicate of what's already existing and probably complicated a program that is already working.
Questions on the division? Members, we're on Division 6. Questions on the division? Questions on the division? So, members, if I understand the division, this is striking, I'm not going to go through the amendment itself, but this is striking on Page 10's line 4, the remainder of the page, all of Page 11, all of Page 12, and 1 through 14 on Page 13. Is that accurate? And then we're doing the renumbering for the sections. Is that accurate, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Speaker, it is. It also makes the adjustment to eliminate those programs and what we refer to as the long title.
Yes, thank you. Any discussion on the amendment? Discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the adoption of Division 6, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Division is adopted. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Speaker, with further indulgence of the committee, of the, excuse me, of the body, what I would, in, while I love hearing myself talk, what I would love to do is move Division Number 2 to House Bill, Standing Committee Amendment Number 1, and then ask, turn the explanation over to a good committee member from Campbell County.
So we have a motion on Division Number 2, Representative Baer. And to remind the body, Division Number 2 on the amendment is lines, Page 1 of the amendment, 1 through 3, 21 through 40 on Page 1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Body, this is simply adding prohibitive, prohibition of using an emergency use authorization vaccine in your mandate. So we are allowing mandates, but we're excluding a mandate of an emergency use authorization. We've seen where the federal government has delayed doing their mandates on their own employees until after FDA approval on a vaccine. So we're just making this in codified law here in the state of Wyoming. So to take you through explanation of the amendment, we start on Page 1, Line 2. In the title, we add requiring vaccinations with emergency use authorization. We go to Page 4, Line 13, and we insert the definition of what an emergency use authorization vaccine is. And I'll read that briefly. Emergency use authorization vaccine means a vaccine that has received an emergency use authorization from the United States Food and Drug Administration, but has not received full approval or authorization from the United States Food and Drug Administration. You can see in the amendment, we're changing the numbering then. And then we go to Page 5, Line 8. And here we insert after the word Wyoming, shall require a mandate or mandate an employee to receive any emergency use authorization vaccine as a condition of employment, notwithstanding any Wyoming law to the contrary, no employer in the state of Wyoming. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Questions on the amendment? This is Division 2, Division 2, which the meat of Division 2 of the amendment is Page 1 of the amendment, lines 21 through 40. Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. So I have a question, probably, and then a comment. But the way I read this, this is any emergency use authorized vaccine, not just COVID-19 vaccine. So we don't know what disease could come up that could be killing people right and left. I mean, literally twice or three times or four times the rate that this is. And we're going to say that we're not going to put in a, that we're going to, we're going to stop emergency use authorized vaccine from being in this. So I want a little discussion on why we're expanding this when we're trying to stay narrowly focused and what the discussion was around the effects of, you know, other diseases we have no idea that may come up. So, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Representative Stiff, we'll get a few questions for Representative Baer lined up, and then we'll, Representative Baer. Representative Stiff, oh, there is, and just to be clear, and maybe this is just for Representative Williams and for maybe the audiences, we're on committee of the whole. It's unlimited debate. That doesn't mean it needs to be unlimited, but it's unlimited debate. Representative Stiff.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. Question for the bringer of this division. And it's similar to what the Majority Floor Leader had said. And I'd like you to address a specific example. So polio has been wiped out in the United States for decades. We don't have any polio here. Polio has, however, remained in limited amounts, say, in a country like Afghanistan. We've had a lot of people from Afghanistan who may be making their way to the United States. So if we adopt this, and if polio returns accidentally to the United States of America and to Wyoming, and because there hasn't been a new polio vaccine, and we haven't needed a polio vaccine, if the FDA authorized an emergency use vaccine to vaccinate against polio, this would allow, this would, this would effectively cover that instance as well. Is that, is that what this does? So this isn't about COVID anymore at all. It's about any disease. Is that, is that what this does?
Any other member, any other member? Representative Baer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the questions. First, to the Majority Floor Leader's concern of this addressing more than just COVID-19. I think that was probably more an oversight when we were in the committee. This is something that we can bring an amendment to add more restrictive language to COVID-19, and that would be a friendly amendment in the next reading. So I'm not opposed to that by any means, and I think that's why we meet as a body to debate these things and cover issues that may have been missed in the committee. To the good representative from District 48 and the example of polio, you know, off the top of my head, I would say that anytime there's an emergency use authorization, there's also going to be some sort of restriction of movement and other things that will come with that. And this is saying notwithstanding any other Wyoming law. So I assume that we would address those issues individually as they come up. This is certainly dealing with employers mandating a vaccine. And so we're limiting their ability to do that with emergency use authorization. But I'm certainly amiable to changing the wording to include COVID-19 emergency use authorization. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Baer. Chairman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I do want to point out that by, I think it was the authorizing congressional language for emergency use, it is prohibited to mandate use of emergency use vaccines. So we would not be going against anything. We would just be duplicating in our law existing, to my understanding, existing federal law. to my understanding, existing federal law. I will also point out that polio, the polio vaccine in that specific discussion is a regular part of our vaccination schedule. That's why we don't have it. It's not that we've stopped vaccinating people for polio because it's miraculously disappeared. So that is actually not part of this issue.
Thank you, Chairman. Further discussion? Chairman Zwanisir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do just want to add on, this is perfectly great language because it's not any emergency use authorization. It's just vaccines with EUAs. And actually, the first one ever was, in fact, COVID-19, if you don't count anthrax about 15 years ago that they were going to do, and then was already a vaccine. So there's nothing to worry about here because these are just vaccinations with EUAs, which would just cover COVID-19. Anything else emerging, I'm sure we would come back and deal with. So don't get EUAs in general that the FDA can apply across the board with vaccinations with EUAs because COVID-19 is the first and only.
Thank you very much. Representative Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have two questions related to this proposed amendment. One has to do with undue hardship. And how would this, how would this be used where it might create an undue hardship for the workplace environment? And then the second one has to do with, what about a situation where we cannot predict that it would not happen, but where we know that the rate of death in a particular situation in COVID could increase? There's data available at the organizations that track the data on COVID, which shows that since, for example, the state to our north enacted an anti-vaccine, that the, the number of deaths has increased. So I'd just like to see what, what your perception, what you see would happen in those two situations.
Thank you, Representative. Further discussion, further discussion. Chairman Nicholas, then we'll go to Representative Baer. So I hope you're making a list, Representative Baer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On and against the amendment? And primarily because we've got 10 amendments going here. They said the concept is we can come and fix it in second reading. I would suggest that we kill this amendment. And if they want to bring it as a revised version, it's a lot simpler for us to follow and track it. So on and against the amendment?
Thank you, Representative. Anybody else? Representative Baer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, to the good representative from District 41. As far as undue hardship, we're again talking about emergency use, and no employer's actually had the authority based on federal law, as the chairman of Labor Health mentioned, to use emergency use authorization vaccine. So there would be no undue hardship. Nothing would change in that regard. As far as predicting future issues and the pandemic getting worse based on this restriction, certainly, that's a concern for all of us. But also at concern, at issue here, and this is what we're talking about, is an untested or early onset vaccine, which hasn't had the time that other vaccines have for the FDA to approve them. So we're just putting a pause on somebody mandating this until the FDA has had an opportunity to study it and make sure that it's safe and effective. Also, for the good chairman of appropriations, certainly, I think in the discussion here, we've heard that there haven't been any emergency use authorizations other than anthrax. So right now, this is restricted to COVID-19. So the verbiage isn't necessary, but I would be willing to bring an amendment to update this if that would make the body feel better. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Yen.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So one of the previous speakers had mentioned that it is in the emergency use authorization law. So just for the members, heads up, there is a court case where a group of employees is challenging a hospital, Bridges et al., versus Houston Methodist Hospital, if anyone wants to look it up. The judge in that case dismissed the lawsuit because he said that the language in there only applied to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. It didn't apply to private employers. So this, in my interpretation, if that matches, the judge's interpretation is that this would be new for a state, and it wouldn't necessarily match up with, with the federal government's version to use authorization. I think the risk is high if we leave it unfocused and not to specifically COVID-19. So I would ask you, let's wait until we have a little more refined language, and then we can take it in another reading. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Chairman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I decided I better refine my language on my statement because I was overly broad. Looking up here, evidently, the requirement of the federal, and I, the folks that deal with drugs at the feds, if it's under emergency use vaccination status, the person providing the vaccine to the patient is required to give them the option to accept or refuse. So exactly how that fits in with a mandate, if you have the option to refuse, that is a little unclear. And as was mentioned, the member from Teton County, you know, that was previously thrown out. But I guess my, my own interpretation of that, having looked at this over the last, you know, eight months or so, is that, that there are many times when we have additional requirements at the state for the protection of our citizens or employees. And so I think that this is a perfectly fine suggestion to put this in, even though, as was stated, this doesn't happen regularly. I mean, this is, this is not normally what happens to new vaccinations because usually, new vaccinations are dealt with over the course of multiple years, and they don't have to be dispensed under emergency use. So I am in favor of this part of the amendment.
Thank you, Chairman. Further, any other discussion? Chairman, any other discussion? Representative Baer, if you want to close this out, we'll dispense with this amendment?
No further comment, Mr. Chairman. I'm ready to move the amendment.
All right, thank you. So members, we are devoting on division two of the House Bill 1001 Standing Committee Amendment. So this is division two of the committee amendment. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no. Chairs in doubt? All those in favor, please rise. Twenty-nine, one on the screen. So the amendment is adopted because we have three people excused. So the amendment is adopted. Thank you. All those opposed, if you'd like to stand up to exercise, you're welcome to. But based on where we are with our call, I think the amendment is adopted. The division, excuse me, the division is adopted. Division two is adopted. Sorry, Chief Clerk. Well, look, Mr. Chairman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I will move division number three. I was looking for my committee member, but I'll explain it. Okay, so division number three are lines 41 to 44 on page one of the amendment. They affect page five and on page five, line 15. So the discussion on this is that this is, overall, we're saying that you cannot have a mandate unless, and then you have to go through and meet these requirements. So first requirement is that employer, as the bill is drafted, determines that mandating vaccinations is critical to ensuring health, safety, and welfare of the workplace, and that the employer provides written evidence of that to workforce services. Okay, so that's more of a healthcare type of arrangement that we look at through the spectrum. The discussion was then, as the amendment reads, or would otherwise jeopardize the business? And the discussion came about regarding federal contracts. And so while I'm sure the federal contracts read all over the place, the one that I had a discussion with somebody with said that in order to get this federal contract, you have to have a vaccine mandate. And then it said, but that allowed you to provide exemptions. So what the discussion was is how do we bring, as I said earlier in my opening, this certainty or guidance to an employer? So what we're helping an employer that says, okay, yeah, I've got a reason I can do the mandate and write it up, and we know what the exceptions are because the state of Wyoming has provided us with a law telling us what the exemptions are to observe the rights of our citizens. So that's what the amendment does. It just brings in, I don't think it weakens the bill. I don't think it, I think what it does is just provide businesses that we're not thinking of outside of the healthcare realm with the guidance that we need. So that's, that's the reason for.
Discussion, discussion. Representative Gray.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Speaker, and.
Just to clarify, excuse me, Representative Gray, we are on division three of the Standing Committee Amendment, which is page one of the amendment, lines 41 through 44. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Appreciate the work of the committee chairman and the bringer of the amendment as well. But I will have to say, I've worked with both of them on this bill in a lot of areas. This is one area where I do think we, I do disagree, and heavily enough to comment on it. I do think it damages the bill. For one, I think it is already covered in the preemption section. If there's a federal contract, then I think the employer would just, it's covered by the preemption section. That federal law requires them to have the mandate in order to receive a contract. And so that whole section, which is at the end of that bill and is a key element, I think, of why this was the main vehicle, I think it's covered there. But what this does is it allows an entity to submit to workforce services any statement that they jeopardize, this jeopardizes their business. And I think there's an argument, you know, anybody could make a creative argument. And the question is, well, is workforce services going to reject those? I don't read it that they can. And so maybe I'm not, maybe I'm wrong there, and the committee chairman can correct me if I'm wrong. I'm going to be voting no on this. I do think it could potentially weaken the bill on the ground. Not to say we couldn't shore up this language a little more on second or third reading, but I think the way it's currently drafted, it weakens it considerably. Thank you.
Thank you. Majority Floor Leader Summers.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. And, you know, so I want to go back to that preemption section, and it's on of the bill because it was brought into that discussion. And I think, I think that's a good discussion. And really, if you read it, it says the provisions of section two, which is where the other piece lies of this act, shall be repealed upon the earlier of, I'm going to just dismiss Romanate number two, which is a sunset clause, a March 31, 2022. But then really, it's in Romanate one. The date a federal law, regulation, rule, or standard takes legal effect that has the effect of requiring Wyoming employers to comply with a federal COVID-19 vaccine mandate, and any challenge to the federal law, regulation, rule, or standard in the federal court system is exhausted. So it's not only when the rule goes into effect, but it's, it's, it's the complete court case. And it's, we've had this same debate on the next bill, is there's this period of time during, during the appeals process on a bill or the, you know, as it goes through the court system, that a business could be subject to a conflict with between federal law and state law, and then obviously the supremacy clause. So I do like this division and because I think it helps ease the way through the problems that exist in the, in section six.
Thank you. Vice Chair Duncan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This actually helps some of our construction crews that have federal contracts. This helps our airports. This helps some of our small business parks who actually have federal contracts. So this, this keeps them from falling into a position of having to choose. And it also prevents them from inadvertently being adamantly, you know, wrongfully affected. So this is a little, this is a little protection for our current small businesses around our state. And this actually helps the bill when it comes to small businesses. So it helps, it helps those that are inadvertently being affected versus all the healthcare. So we're forgetting that all of this and this, these bills are actually pretty detrimental to our small businesses and their autonomy. So this helps that and keeps them whole.
Thank you. Representative Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And a question for the good chairman of the committee. The department that they, that they are to provide written evidence to, does that department have enough manpower to look over these? And then is that department required to respond that they agree with the written evidence as being compelling enough to allow for that exemption? Or is it just send it in to them and it goes in a file? And I would remind everyone that with the budget cuts of the last few years, many of these agencies are down multiple employees. So a couple of questions there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Chairman Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Looking at the latest Craig, maybe we should help some of those budget cuts. But the, the answer to your question is very clear that what we wanted to do is have this in writing and a location in a file that could be identified as a point in time. There is no requirement for workforce services to certify it. There's no provision in here for rules to be promulgated regarding this. It was a discussion when the bill was originally drafted was we wanted to see this set out, and we wanted it in a central location. And that's where, that's where we sent it. So manpower to receive those, open them up, scan them in, or put them in a file is not significant.
Chairman of Appropriations, I heard somebody talk about the Craig report. So the chairman of appropriations stands up. Chairman Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On and against the amendment? So ladies and gentlemen, if you go to page five and look at, and this is Romanate I, lines 13 through 17, it's hard to understand exactly what this language means. Because if you read it, it says the employer determines that requiring a mandate, a vaccine mandate is critical to ensuring the health of the workplace or the safety of the workplace or the welfare of the workplace. Does that mean the safety and welfare of your customers or to your clients? It doesn't. This is the workplace. And so if you read this strictly, this only talks about the workplace. It doesn't talk about your customer or your client or who happens to be in your workplace. This is only about the workplace. And so by adding this phrase, we're saying for your business, which does include your client, it doesn't include your customers. Because if you, if you impose a manmate because you want to protect your customers, that's something different than protecting your workplace. So I think this helps explain, it broadens it. But if you're an employer and you don't want to protect your customer, then don't, don't vote for this amendment. But if you want to protect your customer or your clients, then this language is needed.
Further discussion on the amendment? Further discussion on the division? We're on division three, members. Division three, further discussion? Further discussion seeing none? All those in favor of adoption of division three, please say aye. All those opposed, no. Chairs in doubt? This time, I'll let the eyes and the nose go because, but so all those in favor, please rise. Thirty-seven unenthusiastic ayes just stood. All those no, if you'd like to stand, I think there's less than 37. Thank you very much, or 38. So the division is adopted. Division three is adopted. Chairman Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next amendment, the next division is division four. So, Mr. Speaker, I move division four to four to Standing Committee Amendment Number One. four, to Standing Committee Amendment Number One. On the amendment, it's page, excuse me, page two, lines one through twenty-eight. And I would have expected the fine legislator from Natrona County on the committee to explain this amendment.
And we have a volunteer from Natrona County. Just departed the House. Oh, Representative Gray, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
So the motion is on Division Four.
Thank you. So what this, we're on the list of of the things, as the good chairman of Minerals talked about, the list of things employers need to do before having a mandate. And and this is the section on exemptions. And the change here is really based on the testimony we heard and buttoning up this language, because we heard testimony, one entity that that has triggered a lot of discussion with their mandate where religious exemptions have not been granted to some and have been granted to others. And we had a little bit of an exchange about the concept of a religious exemption. And the way I think about a religious exemption is the quality of someone's, someone's, the way someone describes their religious conviction has nothing to do with the level of their religious conviction. I mean, I I think of the things, I many times in my life have struggled with articulating that, but my religious conviction is as strong as ever. And I think that, as we talked about that one entity, why they didn't grant some religious exemptions, they contracted out with a third party to review those. And it just they didn't really have an answer. They just said, well, this third party that reviewed the answers decided not to grant the religious exemption. And it appeared it had something to do with just, I mean, they were almost grading or the quality or something like that. I mean, and and so we thought about this, look, let's just say that if someone submits a religious exemption, it shall be granted. So that's the first part of the amendment. Subsection A is that an employer shall grant an exemption for religious grounds upon submission of an exemption. Then Part B is the medical exemption issue. And we've heard testimony from that same entity where some medical exemptions that have been filled out by physicians, filled out by physicians, have not been granted. So the committee said, look, let's say that if if a physician is filling out the medical exemption or signs it, that shall be granted. If a physician does not fill it out, then, okay, they're going to have their process to maybe verify or or look at what what's going on here, whether it's accurate. So subsection B says an employer shall grant an exemption for medical grounds upon submission of an exemption that is completed or signed by a licensed physician. For exemptions for medical grounds that are not signed or completed by a licensed physician, an employer may grant the exemption. Subsection C was actually an addition from another member. So at the pleasure of the speaker and the chairman of minerals, could I turn it over to that member? I I support the amendment, but but um a little bit, I was thinking maybe he could present that discussion and then I could come back to D.
And I'm pleased to do that. Representative Baer, are you presenting that section? Representative Baer, so members were still on Division Four, but this is one of the subsections in that C, I think, that Representative Baer will be outlining. Representative Baer, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I can present lines eighteen through twenty-one of the second page of the amendment. And this is simply adding an exemption for those who are already recovered from COVID-nineteen or have proven natural immunity. So they have to prove that, but if they have some way of proving that they have recovered from natural immunity, they also would have an exemption.
Any further discussion on the amendment, on the, well, let's let's actually finish out the amendment and then we'll we'll take questions on the entirety. Thank you, Representative Baer. Representative Gray, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Appreciate it. Thanks for the indulgence there. And then subsection D is the last part of the amendment. And this is lines twenty-three to twenty-eight. So in light of the discussion, and one of the reasons why the timing of the session is is very important, is that there are some mandates that are going into effect at the end of the month or the start of next month. The big one is the first day of next month. There are some others, actually. Many affecting Casper. And and we can't say geographic names. I wanted to make sure to that was a change in our rules. I didn't mention that in the in the general session. There are some that actually go into effect October thirty-one in 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 Casper. So that was a big part of the timing of the session. And in light of the the testimony on the problems that the exemptions have had, and and we wanted to make sure this bill has language that it does affect this bill does affect those mandates. It applies to those mandates that were issued before the bill but go into effect October thirty-one or after. We wanted to provide the ability to reopen the exemption process with these new standards, because there have been problems. So that's what subsection D does. So the bill already applied to mandates on or after October thirty-one, was already in language. And then there's this sixty-day pause later in the bill. But we're going to say in subsection D, they're going to reopen the exemption period subject to these three things, because there have been problems and inconsistencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Gray. All right. Representative McGuire, first, no, it's, go ahead, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And so now we get to the crux of why we're really here. So in the nineteen twenties, there was some state land in the middle of the town where I'm from. And it was deeded to the county in order to build a hospital. And then the county went back to the state. And this legislative body provided funds to build the original hospital in the city where I was born. In fact, I was born in that hospital. And through the years, the county has taxed itself to grow the hospital. And there have been massive private donations that have gone into that. And then about a year and a half or so, maybe two years ago, there was a proposal to sell it to a giant out-of-state company. And so this giant out-of-state company now owns that hospital and five or six others around the state. And that particular company issued a mandate that we want all of our healthcare workers to be vaccinated. And really and truly, that's why we're here. I've heard all kinds of, oh, all these people are going to lose their jobs and everything else. The majority of businesses in the state of Wyoming don't rise up to the number of employees that will be covered by the federal mandate. And I haven't heard anybody mention that there's an exemption. Employees can be tested. And any mandates that come out are immediately going to be challenged. And then there will be stays and it will go through the federal court. It's not going to go through the state court. It's going to go through the federal court. Because when Wyoming came in, there was a thing called the supremacy clause in the Constitution, and the state of Wyoming agreed to abide by the United States Federal Constitution. And that means that we obey the rules that are set forth by the federal government, whether we like it or not. And as you drive home and you look at all that wide open space, you wonder, hmm, I wonder why there aren't houses and things like that all over those. Well, that's because the majority of the land in the state of Wyoming is owned by the federal government. And more than half of the minerals are owned by the federal government. So for those of us who are married, you kind of understand that when you have a partnership, like the state has a partnership with the federal government, sometimes it's good to take a slower pace and to work with that other partner and to see where they're going and to see what actually happens. And the reason I'm here is I would like to ask the good bringer of the bill, so the statement was made that this, I don't know how many pages we have that are being amended like crazy, is going to add clarity and make it easier for our businesses to survive and move forward in these uncertain times. And I'm just struck, a friend of mine sent me a Dilbert cartoon not very long ago. And the the jux of it was that when HR comes in, it's not because they want to pay the employees more money. If they want to do that, they just pay more money. It's because there are going to be additional rules to make people do something. I think that's where we are right now, is we're dealing with Dilbert. And to the good bringer of the bill, my question is, how is what we're doing right here going to add clarity and make it easier for our local businesses to survive and to go out and get the federal contracts that they need? Because the majority of the big businesses in Wyoming deal with the federal government on some level. Small businesses like mine, I don't care. I don't have a vaccine mandate, don't have one for my employees, doesn't affect me a bit. And I would submit to you that the vast majority of the businesses in Wyoming are in the same place. And all that this is going to do is add complexity. And it's going to add mandates that I'm going to have to deal with, whether I want to or not. Thank you.
Thank you. So reminder to the body, and we don't name, use names, proper names or name, proper names of fictitious, proper names, or fictitious names of fictitious proper names. I don't even know, I don't even know how that categorizes it there. But we do appreciate the, maybe the reference, but let's not use the name. So I have Representative Haroldson first, and then Representative Yen. Representative Haroldson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So I want to just bring a little bit of clarity to the last comment or conversation. So House District Four, the House district that I represent, over one-third of the employment of my county is currently under a mandate. So we have a powerhouse there that's been fully mandated now. We have BNSF that's in mandate status. Sorry, my bad. I strike that, as well as a hospital. And so you guys have to realize that that's, that changes the email outlook massively. Because I've got people, people I know, people that I I see every single day that are at a point of either making a medical decision that they don't agree with or losing their job. One of those employers has yet to even come out with any options for exemptions. And so you, this, this is relevant to you guys. We are in a relevant position and a relevant place. And the decisions we make will have relevant impact on families in this state. And do we have all the answers? No, I mean, we're working on it. And I I definitely commend everyone that's working on it. And thank you guys for being willing to be here and work on this with us. But at the end of the day, livelihoods are at stake right now. And 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 there is a point where it's a hundred today. But who's to say it isn't going to be ten, six months from now? Or all. I mean, that's where, that's the the slide we've seen in this nation, I believe, we're there. So just so you guys are aware, it it, does it affect? Yes, it does. It affects, and it is affecting. And for a county of eighty-five hundred, eighty-six hundred people to to have our main employers, large large-level employers all be mandated, it's it's definitely very much in effect. And so just to bring I I maybe a little bit of clarity, is this, is it a frustrating ten amendments? Maybe so, but it's stuff that we need to definitely walk through, work through and figure out. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And so for the body, this is committee the whole, and it is unlimited debate. Right now, we're actually on an amendment. So let's try to actually stay within the context of the amendment. That was, and this is on Division Four. So I've kind of, maybe I let it get away a little bit as for there for a bit, but let's try to actually keep it within the amendment. Within the amendment, the context of the amendment, striking language and adding language. And we maybe can proceed from there. You will get, we have the entire day for committee the whole. The entire day, if you so choose. So I think we have opportunities to give further thoughts on the bill as amended in the end. And we have more amendments, committee the whole amendments too. So on the amendment, Division Four, Representative Yen.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. On the amendment, so when we're talking about page two, lines nine and ten of the amendment, employer shall grant an exemption for religious grounds upon submission of an exemption. So I I I'm a little confused on what what this would look like. So if I write a note that says religious exemption and I submit it to my employer, is that all I need to get a religious exemption? If so, how do we prevent essentially fraudulence? If I know that my employee goes to the same church that I do, and I heard my preacher say vaccines are great, you should get a vaccination. And then that employee submits a religious exemption to me. Under this language, do I just automatically have to submit it? Do I automatically have to accept it? And so I I guess my question is, I'm sure we have religious exemptions in other parts of our statutes. First Amendment's a great thing, and it's super important in making sure we have that in our statute to ensure that we we can have sincerely held beliefs and exemptions for them. So I I I don't believe we would have something like this in our other statutes. And so my question again is, how do we, how do we ensure that employees don't try to make a religious exemption when they truly just have a personal objection? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Let's get a couple back on the amendment. Let's get a couple of comments and then we'll go to Representative Gray. Representative Chairman Zwanitser.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And and many similar concerns that were just brought up. And maybe they can be addressed, but I'm, the more I'm thinking through this, because this is really one of the most important parts of the bill. I I guess I'm going to ask you about no on this division and come back with a a fixed version. About each one of these letters, I have some issues with. So we talked about religious grounds. As as many of you know, anybody can go become a licensed minister for about five dollars on the internet. And I don't know, in other states, they've allowed those people to write religious exemptions. I don't think this is tight enough. And I don't know how to I think we need to tighten that definition up in A. Same with B. When we're talking about licensed physicians, I I don't know if I can go to a podiatrist and they can write me a medical exemption, but I think under the statute that would be allowed for my dermatologist. And so when we say that there needs to be a medical exemption from a licensed physician, we we really need to tighten that up on on what we're dealing with. On C, I I have concerns, just because I don't think we know enough about COVID-nineteen and the effects that if you have it once, you're automatically immune. And I think that needs a lot more conversation in this body. And so I think it's a really important amendment. It's it's really the crux of this bill on on that affects a large amount of employees. I just think we probably should vote no and spend some time this afternoon really clarifying these terms as we move forward. But if we can address some of those now, that'd be great. But I I think it needs a lot more work.
Thank you. I'm I'm going to let Representative Gray respond to some of this because they're going to stack up and I see more people at the mic. So Representative Gray on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, on that. And I I would agree with the last speaker. This, this amendment is pivotal. I don't, I think without this amendment, the bill and I know the chairman might might disagree. I I think it is significantly weakened. I I think it is, it is pivotal that we get this language right. I think around the edges, maybe we could work on it. But I think this is the framework we should work from. So, you know, responding to the last speaker, I think we pass this. And then we keep working on it. But responding to some of these points, for one, a religious exemption is between you and God. I don't think you can have a fraudulent religious exemption. And how are you going to parse that out? I mean, I was talking about this, I wanted to give sort of the the committee testimony, and and it does affect more than that one entity. A lot of our testimony was on that issue, not all of it. But think about the way they've handled this, which is they've decided to contract out with a third-party entity to review the written responses. And they had no answers on why some religious exemptions had not been granted. No answers. They they don't understand it. I mean, at one point, they basically said, well, it was the veracity of the responses. Well, how is that determined? I mean, it's between a person and God. So I think on religious exemptions, this is the only way to do it. You can't call somebody up and ask somebody whether it's sincere or not. It's, it's just, that that's the way it is. You can't have a third party review the written responses. That that doesn't make sense. So I I think this is the way, the way to do it. It's it's between somebody and God. And I I think that's the policy question on the first one. You know, responding to some of these points, I I think this provides more clarity. I mean, right now, you have a system where you have exemption processes, like we were talking about. I mean, right now you have a system where you have exemption processes, like we were talking about, where they're going out to different entities and, and some people are getting them, some aren't. On the medical issue, I, I don't understand how a, a licensed physician filling out a medical exemption, how that can't be granted. I mean, are they, is, is that somehow a fraudulent signature or is it a fraudulent claim? Well, that's a licensed physician. That's quite a claim for somebody to, to be making. If they, when they deny that, that, that statement, which has occurred. Medical exemptions have been denied that have been filled out by licensed physicians. And I, I just don't know from a policy perspective, how we can have that. And I think that that's less clarity, not more, if that's how it's going to proceed. The other thing too, is that, that the statement earlier, that this applies to a small business, it only applies to an entity that wants to move forward with the mandate. So in, in the speaker earlier from the Toronto County, he said he doesn't want to have a mandate. So this, this bill doesn't apply to him at all, that, that small business. It would have to be one that wants to have a mandate. That's what we're looking at here. What are the checkboxes they have to have if they want to, they want to do that? So I think this is a pivotal amendment and, and I, I think it provides a lot of clarity. So encourage an I vote. Thank you.
Thank you. It was a great representative Sherwood. You've been standing patiently for quite a while. So why don't you proceed? And then we have two at the back and I think Representative Heiner up here at the front. And I'm sorry, I didn't see you earlier. So Representative Sherwood, please proceed on Division Four, standing committee amendment number one, House Bill 1001.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'll try to put a bow on this. I am on and against the amendment. I agree that it needs quite a bit of work. Essentially, if we adopt this, what we're doing is swapping the ability of the employer to provide and accept submission of written evidence of an objection on religious or medical grounds. We're swapping that for shall. So no questions asked, just shall. So that removes a litmus test for sincerity. It removes the science. So it removes the ability to have either an in-house review with commentary or a third-party review. And maybe that would happen through the Department of Health as it is for childhood immunizations. So again, on and against the amendment, I think that it is hindering our business's ability to determine science and sincerity. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Larson.
Lloyd. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to ask for a little clarity or understanding the relevance there on line, in the medical exemptions on line 12 through 16. That second sentence says, for exemptions for medical grounds that are not signed by a competent licensed physician, an employer may grant an exception. I'm just, if he could help me understand why that is important because it's, you can or cannot, why, so are we telling them they may? It just, they have that option now without us having to tell them. So if you could help me understand the relevance of that, please.
Thank you, Representative Larson. Representative Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, I'm, I'm not in favor of mandates. And if I read this right, this is essentially mandating exemptions. But we have a large hospital in our county that has over 2,100 employees. And they have over 75% already vaccinated without a mandate. There are employees who are asking both ways. If we don't get the mandate, if we don't get the vaccination, what about my protection workplace? They go down the road to the south of us and, and look for other employment. We don't want to lose them. We have critical healthcare needs in Wyoming. So my question has to do with conditions of employment really. And, and how is this going to help the employer and the employees in, 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 in regards to conditions of employment, particularly line 23 of the division where it talks about going, you know, to previous situations? I think that really muddies a lot of stuff. So I'd be, I'd be interested in some discussion on that. Thank you. And how it helps the employer.
Thank you very much. Representative Heiner. Then we'll go to the chairman Greer for a bit. And then we have Chairman Wilson up. Representative Simpson. Representative Heiner.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This is a federal mandate that is, has broad implications and encompasses a lot of people. It covers a lot of people here in the United States. In so, in such, it one size does not fit all. And that's why we need exemptions for, because there are case-by-case situations where people cannot take the vaccine because of, of medical conditions or other reasons. I say that, say that because I hear some of my colleagues trying to tighten up these exemptions. But I, I want to point out that my wife works for the federal government. She has for a number of years. And they have exemptions in the federal government for the mandate. She asked clarification about the religious exemption. And she was instructed by her supervisor that she does not have to go to a clergy or someone to be able to certify her religious exemption. All she has to do is put down that she strongly opposes or has strong feelings. So if the federal government has not tried to tighten these exemptions, why are we trying to tighten them up so much? Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Chairman Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The reason we're here is to have this discussion. Okay. And we're having a good debate. One of the things with respect to this amendment is the structure of this amendment is much better, much better suited for the debate than what was in the original bill. So, so I do ask for us to, to pass this amendment and then continue with the debate. I even see an amendment regarding the issue that's, that's coming on about sincerity of religious beliefs. I'll, I'll share some of those opinions as who, who's going to judge my sincerity. But, but nonetheless, the structure here with this amendment is much cleaner and much easier for us to debate and take through the system. So keep that in the back of your mind. I, I also want to address an issue, the question that was brought up. And so there are many, many employers in, in large employers in the state of Wyoming who are headquartered elsewhere in the country and in some cases in the world. And so they are issuing mandates based upon their corporate headquarters in another state with different values or views than we have in the state of Wyoming. And those mandates are coming forward to the local operations in Wyoming. And so they come forward to the local operations in Wyoming. And employees have values that are similar to most of my constituents regarding this issue. Nay, terminate their employment. And then they go right over, because there is a labor shortage, to their competitor and get a job. I'm going to submit to you, think about this. This mandate is going to help those local operators and managers in Wyoming who are getting directions from headquarters thousands of miles away to be able to have a reason to keep their trained workforce within their organization, rather than seeing them terminate, quit and go work for their competitor. Think some of this through. So, but anyway, my, my main comment was, we need to debate this. But this structure is a much better structure than the original bill. So there is a good amendment.
Thank you, Chairman Greer. Chairman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
It'll be Representative Simpson. And then over here is Stavar, Representative Stavar. Chairman, please proceed.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to give folks a little bit more information about the religious exemption issue. You know, there, there have been some concerns expressed about, well, maybe it's not sincere, you know, it should be tightened up. I just want to say, since the Civil Rights Act of 1964, this is not an issue dealing with just COVID. It's been adjudicated for decades and decades and decades. And it has been clearly, and I'm reading off of the, I'll only read one line, so I think that's allowable, off of the federal agency that enforces this, what you should know, workplace religious accommodation. It says very clearly, a religious practice may be sincerely held even if it is newly adopted, not consistently observed, or different from the commonly followed tenets of the individual's religion. So to say, well, I go to the same church and I don't have the same opinion, so therefore that person shouldn't have it. That has been dealt with for decades by the courts and, and by HR people. So you may not like it. You may think that person is insincere or that you wouldn't agree with their opinion. Or you don't agree with the way they do their religion, or you think they only follow it on Friday and Saturday and not the rest of the week. But that, that is not up to us. That's been determined that that is up to the person and their religious beliefs. And we, we are, I think we would be on very shaky ground if we attempted to put some sort of steps or, or evaluation in statute. So I'm in favor of the amendment.
Thank you, Representative Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members, I, I generally feel that Division Four strengthens this bill and I encourage you to vote for it. With that said, I think we need to die to have a little more dialogue on item D, which has not been discussed. Item D is the area that says those employers in the state of Wyoming that have already issued the mandate. So let's say in a company, they issued a mandate three weeks ago. So a company can do anything they want to with the mandate. It might've been a hard mandate. You either be vaccinated or else you're fired. Or they could have put, perhaps followed the, the guidelines from the federal government and suggested that you either become manned or vaccinated or you are tested weekly. So I'm a little concerned about D. Because my question for the presenter of this division is what kind of are we risking opening Pandora's box here? If I was laid off three weeks ago, so this says my employer has to reopen that window, does that mean that I am able to come back three weeks later and, and demand that my employment be reinstated? I'd like some clarification on that to make sure that we're comfortable with D. I, if, if D is really just intended to just ask companies to reevaluate, but quite frankly, let's, let's be honest with ourselves. If a company three weeks ago went through the process with this bill literally opens the door for them to say, okay, if I'm being required to reevaluate, I'm just going to fill out the form that shows why it now is beneficial for my company to issue the mandate. And they're going to have the exemptions. But I, I, I'm a little uncomfortable with this retroactive issue with item D. So I'd appreciate some input. Thank you.
Representative Stavar.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Honored for the amendment. You know, for, the first amendment of the Constitution protects your right to freely exercise your right of faith in all areas of life, both private and public. All right. The amendment set up more or less like the school mandates. They can't ask questions. So honor for the amendment.
I, I know there's lots of folks that want to get up so, and, but I'm going to keep going around the room. So Representative Duncan. And then I'll let Representative Gray go because he wants to respond to a couple of points that came up. So Representative Duncan, go to Representative Gray, and then the Madam Minority Floor Leader. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to focus real quick. The religious exemption keeps coming up. Just want to give a little clarification. With testimony, we had a, a, a person who was denied their religious exemption. They had previously with the same company, all they had to do on that exemption form was check a box saying for a flu vaccine, they were claiming a religious exemption prior to COVID. All it was, was a checkbox that yes, this violates, I'm, I'm claiming a religious exemption. That was it. No questions asked. Since COVID, it's a nine-page exemption now. And so if you look at state and federal, it's a checkbox. If it is a, several of these companies, we had testimony. And even some people here in our body have had to go through this process. It's a nine-page. They're asking for things like over-the-counter medications. Have you had? Will you take them? Will you use them? Very invasive. It is several questions. It, it's, it's almost nine pages. So it's several questions that's extremely invasive. So the problem is, previously, when you requested a religious exemption, it was a checkbox. Now, these companies are doing nine pages. So that's the testimony. That's the difference is now it's becoming an essay basically of everything you've consumed, you potentially would consume, you know, all these different things. So that's, just wanted to give you guys a little more clarification on, on why the shall is there. It's because it was there before in practice. So that's, that's one of the, the main reasons for the religious exemption. So on and for that part.
Thank you. Representative Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just wanted to respond for clarity on, on two points made earlier. There were questions. So first from the comments from Representative 20, from the District 21, appreciate his point. So I want to sort of eke out what's, what's going on here. So you've got three boxes. One, first box are mandates that have already gone into effect. This bill does not deal with that at all. I'd like to make it retroactive, but this bill doesn't do that. This amendment doesn't do that. Part D of this amendment doesn't do that. Box three are amendments, are, are mandates that may come into effect in the future, an employer does on their own, not subject to the federal preemption. That may come into effect in the future. This does deal with that already. Absent subsection D. Those are pretty clear boxes. Then you have the second box, box, box two, which is more complex. Mandates that have been issued but have not yet gone into effect yet. So we have a mandate that's going into effect November 1. It was issued, but it's going into effect November 1. There are some more that are going into effect October 31. This bill already in later language was meant to handle those mandates. And in fact, it has a 60-day pause, as, as, you know, was discussed in the explanation on those mandates. Okay? So those were already affected. This just adds one more piece to the clarifying element of that. We're going to put a pause 60 days on mandates that have not yet gone into effect but have been issued. And we're also in those 60 days going to reopen the religious and medical exemption checkbox that this statute puts into place subject to these provisions. Because there was a lack of clarity and there've been problems, as the testimony has shown. So it's just reopening it for that second, that second box. So that, that's what we're trying to do in D. And again, it already dealt with that second box in some way. It, but section D reopens because in one entity closed their period already. And it's going into effect November 1, but they closed their period. There was a lot of problems with the way those exemptions were granted. So that's the importance of subsection D. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Minority Floor Leader, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I, well, first let me start by saying, I agree that this amendment provides far more clarity than what is in the current bill. I also agree that it really is the crux of the bill. But because of that, I think it needs to be done correctly in order for us to move it forward. So I'm going to encourage us to vote no on this division. Have the bringer bring it back tomorrow. And I just want to talk about B and C. B and C to me are confusing. And it was brought up before, but I, I want to bring it up again. That second sentence of the change to B says that for exemptions for medical grounds that are not signed or completed by a licensed physician. So what does that mean, honestly? I mean, just think about it. The first sentence is, and I totally agree with this, if someone has a medical exemption, of course, right? They should be, they should be allowed to not have a vaccine, of course, right? But what does it mean that someone doesn't have a physician certify that? That an employer gets to act as a doctor? I'm really concerned about that and actually confused because employer A could grant that exemption and employer B might not just because an individual said so. So that concerns me. So I'd like to see those broken apart. But then when we go to C, and friends, take a look at C. It begins by saying, an employer shall grant an exemption for medical contraindication to the administration of the vaccine, right? To me, that's part of B, right? We're talking about a medical contraindication. That should simply be part of that first sentence of B, right? That's a medical ground. If you have a medical contraindication, of course. of course, of course, you should have an exemption. So that portion of C should be part of B. The second portion of C is something completely different. All right. That section is about someone who has already had a COVID nineteen infection. That has nothing to do with a medical contraindication that's in the beginning part, portion of that sentence. So that needs to be broken out. And honestly, I would argue against that. Right? We have evidence right now saying if you've already had COVID nineteen, the vaccine helps you. Especially if you had COVID nineteen before the Delta variant. Right? But I'm just talking about process right now. B and C need to be broken apart. Portions of C belong in B. And we need, I think, additional subsections. So I'm going to encourage us to vote no on this because we don't pass things that aren't, aren't correct, that aren't good. And we have two more readings. So let's bring up, right, a new Division Four on second and third reading. Thank you.
Thank you. We are on Division Four. Representative Hallinan.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would rise to support this division saying that at least in respect to the part of this bill that has to do with the well, the part that has to do. Oh gosh, I can't, can't think very straight today. That part that has to do with the let me gather my thoughts a little bit. Thank you. The part that has to do. Okay, thank you.
The good Representative Hallinan went to the podium without his notes. So he's provided his notes. And so we'll be
The part that has to do with the written evidence that the employee is fully recovered from COVID nineteen infection. That part I think is covered. I, I, I really believe that those, that issue is one that has been addressed by scientists. Eighty-one scientists have an article in our Wikipedia that lists the studies that have been done on this issue. And these have shown, at least I'll record two of them. I don't want to go over all of them. The study essentially highlights that recovered COVID nineteen patients mount a superior immunity to the infection versus the vaccine people. That's in the, that's one of the studies. Another study done by Israelis. And they have a large number of people that have had COVID vaccines. I think it's about ninety percent of their population. Discovered that immunity acquired through infection from COVID nineteen is superior to immunity from the Pfizer vaccine. I can say that, I think.
No, actually, that's the second, second time you've used a proper name. So let's try to hold back on all proper names of companies or institutions.
So I think that this shows that there is a significant body of science that shows that the previous infection on COVID nineteen is superior to that as provided by the vaccine. So why are we requiring people that have had COVID nineteen to also have a vaccine? And I think it's a good excuse, a good exemption to admit that those folks do not need a vaccine. So with that in mind, Mr. Speaker, I recommend that we approve this division. Thank you.
Thank you. So just a reminder again to the body. Let's, let's continue to avoid the use of proper names of commercial entities or informational entities, et cetera. We're not here to debate their practices or who they are or what they are or give them rise or fall. We're here to debate the issues. We're on Division Four. Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, thank you. And, and so I want to just make sure I'm clear on understanding this. And my concern revolves around, around D in the amendment. And whether we're going back, you know, usually we try in statute not to go back in time and capture. We always try to go forward in time and capture those because we don't know the, you know, we, we never know the, the consequences that we do when we go back in time. So I just want to be clear and I want to understand this. So in the original version, the, in section seven, this, you know, this, this section in the, in the law would go into effect October thirty-first twenty, everybody after October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one would be captured. Those before wouldn't. But this section D then would go backward in time, if that's right. I want to understand that. And then I want to hear, and I know this has been stated, but I want to clearly understand why that was decided to go back in time. What testimony did you hear that compelled you to do that? Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So the current language, we talk about clarity on the statute and I, I think it is like one of the key bills we're going to be doing during the special session. I'll be honest, I don't know the current language, what happened. So there's this, say you have a mandate going into effect November one. We're putting this sixty-day pause in place. We're also putting all the checkboxes in place. Right now, there's already a religious and, uh, medical exemption in the checkboxes. So one entity has already done it in the initial round. Are they going to need to reopen it in the sixty-day pause? I don't know. I think we should. Honestly, I don't know. I think it would end up, it could be litigated whether they would need to reopen it in the current language. This makes it clear that they are going to reopen it during that sixty-day pause, which is already in the bill anyway, because of the testimony we heard that there were problems. And we're, we're making it, it, it clear. And that second sentence on subsection B, I wanted to, to, I mean, look, reading two, reading three, we could debate deleting that. I'm not sure it's totally necessary. I think it does the same thing if you take out the May in, in section two. If you don't have a doctor, it shall be granted if you have a doctor. If you don't, I guess you could be silent on it. But again, it, you know, the, the chairman of minerals, I think one of the things that a good committee does is it sets the framework for the policy discussions in readings two and three and make sure that the clarity is there to have those policy discussions. The way this reads right now, there are real problems and things got mixed in in certain sections that weren't supposed to. So if we could please pass this and then have the policy discussions on each subsection, readings two and three, I think it would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Gray. Further discussion, Representative Baer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to reiterate what the speaker just said and what the chairman said earlier. This is the best debatable structure we can have. There are issues with the current language. We need to pass this so that we can have continued debate on these individual issues. I would just as soon address the debate that was brought up here after we've passed this and in the next reading. So I'll just be brief and say that I'm on and for this amendment, this division of the amendment. And please think of this being the best debatable amendment for all the body to work with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on Division Four? Further discussion on Division Four? Further discussion? Seeing none. Members, we are voting on Division Four, which is lines one through twenty-eight on page two of the amendment. All those in favor of the division, please say aye. Those opposed, no. All those in favor, please rise. Thirty-two. Those opposed? Thank you. The division is adopted. Chairman Greer. Division Four is adopted. Chairman Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Halfway there. Mr. Speaker, I move Division Number Five to stand in committee amendment. I'll just try to tackle this one quickly with us. Division Number Five is on page two, lines twenty-nine and thirty-one of the amendment. It is page seven, line seven on your bill. And it was just a point of clarification brought by the committee. This talks about an employer first requires or mandates employees to receive a COVID nineteen vaccine as a condition of employment on or after, on or after October thirty-one. Uh, and this is, this drops down into if they aren't in compliance with subsection A, that there is a civil penalty. The point of clarification is on line seven after employment. It says that take a fact. Okay, a condition of employment, take a fact on or after October thirty-one. Just again, making, it was just a couple of words to help with clarity, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. And discussion on Division Five. Discussion on Division Five, seeing none. All those in favor of the adoption of Division Five, please say aye. Those opposed, no. The division is adopted. Division Five is adopted. Chairman Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move Division Number Seven to standing committee amendment number one, the House Bill one zero zero one. Mr. Speaker, Division Number Seven is on page two, lines forty to forty-seven and effect page fourteen, lines nine, ten, and eleven on your bill. Mr. Speaker, members, this, uh, this provision is the program which provides funding to all employers for testing. This was a, um, as this was drafted, it was initially drafted with an October one, twenty twenty-four date, which is the stretch out date on the ARPA funds. When the senator I was working with on this, we were cleaning up a couple of other dates and this date got moved. And so I think, I feel that if this program stays in place, that it would be appropriate to extend this fund for employers to get reimbursed or help with costs for testing until those ARPA funds are exhausted or till the date that they terminate. And, and the reason why I say that is if we are preempted and if employers over a hundred have to either have their employees vaccinated or tested periodically, this would be an assistance to them. And so that's why I'm asking for the date change.
Discussion on Division Number Seven. Discussion, discussion on seven, seeing none. All those in favor the adoption of Division Number Seven, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Division is adopted. Division Seven is adopted. Chairman Greer, why didn't you start with these divisions? I'm sorry. Chairman Greer, please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I will move Division Number Eight to standing committee amendment number one, the House Bill one zero zero one. You can find, the, the, the division is on page three of the amendment, lines three through eight. And, and effect the bill on page fifteen, line six through eight with an insertion. Unfortunately, this came in in committee in two separate amendments. So there was no way to divide those out so we could have eleven divisions on the floor. So they're, they're combined together. And with those, once again, I'll turn to the fine committee member from Natrona County to explain this amendment.
We have a lot of choices from Natrona County, but I see one moving to the mic. Representative Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. What this amendment does, and, and thank you to the chairman of the minerals committee, what this amendment does is it clarifies this preemption section. Doesn't do anything to weaken it. It clarifies. I think there's some concern that, okay, if a federal mandate comes through, how does this look? Oftentimes what happens on these is sometimes states team together and that'll probably be the vehicle that moves through the federal court system. But sometimes there's a state AG that does their own thing. And occasionally a federal court will move quicker. Oftentimes it occurs in, in the jurisdiction in the southern part of our country. And that becomes the vehicle where this federal challenge moves through the system. And so if, if the state of Wyoming is not signed onto that challenge, say the state of Louisiana brings brings, immediately files after the rules issued for a stay, they get the stay. They get a nationwide stay. And say as that makes its way through the court system, that stay is lifted. Does that apply as they continue to make their way through the court system to the Supreme Court to have the case heard? And what we don't want to do is get caught in this limbo where if a temporary stay is lifted and they're still trying to get cert from the Supreme Court, this might go into effect for a brief period. The point of this provision is to make sure that all court challenges brought from a state or territory of the United States are exhausted through the system. So what we do here is we delete the certification from the governor because that doesn't make sense in, in a state where the AG, I think, works at the pleasure of the governor. Because it might not be a vehicle that comes through the state of Wyoming that ends up being the main vehicle that, that we're represented by. So if Louisiana gets a nationwide stay when they file, our AG doesn't sign onto that. Say the stay is lifted, they're waiting for cert from the Supreme Court. This should still be in effect. And so it removes the certification and it just makes clear that it's any state or territory challenge as it makes its way through the federal court that we may be looped into, which is usually the way these things work because they don't want to handle multiple challenges. You know, usually they decide on, on one. So just wanted to be clear, it's really a clarity thing and making sure we don't get looped into a mandate that might go into effect for a brief period. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, I actually appreciate the clarification in this. I, I had marked up here in the original bill, looking at it, says the governor shall certify that secretary state of any occurrence of the subject to this paragraph and we're striking that. And that's really good because one of the things that I look at in this is the word exhausted. And we, we come in and we try to talk about this in the amendment here on page fifteen, line eight. It says that we're going to answer any challenge to the federal law, regulation, rule, or standard includes any challenge filed by any state or state's territory in a federal court. So that is a huge net that we're casting with this. Absolutely massive net. And, and the reason I'm concerned about not having this particular language in there is exactly what the, the bringer of this amendment is trying to do is say there are cases back and forth all the time that get stayed, don't get stayed, get thrown out, get this. But what my bigger concern is, is the word exhausted. Over the past twelve years, we've been in court cases and not in court cases with a, a federal bill that was passed called the Affordable Care Act. And twelve years later, we are still fighting Supreme Court cases. These have gone through these bubblings up through the federal court system. So I, I guess do what you will with this particular amendment because what I honestly have is I've got a litany of amendments for second reading, but I wanted to see what we were going to do here in committee of the whole. But honestly, the language that's in here, when we talk about being exhausted, we're going to, we're going to hold captive private industries in this state for twelve years to be able to put into effect what they need to do? What they feel they need to do to protect their businesses for twelve years potentially? If not longer? I, I don't know how this solves anything. I, I understand the plight of, of, of people that may be losing their jobs. I could, I could. I work for a healthcare provider. If I chose not to get the vaccine, I could be facing something like this. I get it. But the problem is, is holding captive But the problem is, is holding captive any healthcare industry, any business in this state that chooses to do something on their own for twelve years to say that our state law takes effect while court cases are battling out, that's really preempting business decisions by this body. It's a business decision, not a legislative decision. So I guess do what you will with this particular amendment. I do appreciate the clarity that I'm just not sure how any particular governor, as it's labeled here in this particular language, how any governor would ever certify or would ever feel comfortable certifying that something is done and had been exhausted through the court systems. I don't think that that, there's ever a chance. So I appreciate the clarity that this brings. But just know that in the next reading, I'm going to be taking this all out anyways or attempting to because I don't understand the reasoning why we want to preempt business decisions. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. So maybe there's a chief executive that wouldn't be willing to certify what exhaustion is, but there's a speaker that would. Next speaker on the amendment, on the division, around Division eight, Representative Stiff.
Mr. Speaker, I have a question for the bringer of this division as follows. So if you could explain using a real world example of whether the, of the effect of this, so that if you have a federal mandate that is then challenged by a court action filed by a state, and let's imagine the scenario where either no stay of the federal mandate is entered or such stay is lifted, then if we adopt this amendment, then this division, is it the case then that Wyoming employers would be subject to conflicting requirements? Because on the one hand, they would be obligated under state law to only impose a mandate if they jump through such hoops. And on the other hand, a hypothetical federal regulation might require, you know, them to have a vaccine mandate. So is the idea here that you want to create conflicting legal demands on the employer? Is that the goal here?
All right. We'll go with Rep. Sam Gray, and then we're going to Chairman Zwanzer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Really quickly on those last two speakers, and I know, you know, Mr. Speaker referred to this on the two ago, is I really think those two questions are on the word exhausted, which we did not touch and this amendment does not touch. And maybe we have that policy discussion on readings two and three, as we discussed in the previous amendment two. This removes the certification, which we do very rarely in statute. And I don't, we don't think is good policy, or now I'm speaking for the, it's not good policy in my opinion. And we make clear that any state or territory challenge is subject to the previous sentence. That is in the definition of a challenge. Then we could, you know, readings two and three have the discussion about the word exhausted, which I think the previous two speakers are discussing, but this amendment does not touch the word exhausted and that first sentence, which I think does come with some fascinating policy questions.
Thank you. The definition of exhaustion. We'll get to that. Chairman Zwanzer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm not sure we need to get to that. I'm just making sure everyone's read lines nine and ten and line eight that says or. So I know we've talked about how this could go on, but there is a date certain, and actually I think the big fight in my mind will be on amendment number nine when we try to change that date. But this is from the way I read this, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, there's Romanets one and two. So either exhaustion or March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, which is in six months. So I don't see the same maybe black helicopters everybody else is seeing. Because I think the date certain is on line ten, which is what I'd really like to argue about here in a second, but since no one else mentioned that, I figured I better.
Further discussion on the division. Further discussion on Division eight. Chairman Greer.
Mr. Speaker, and I'll just say the or was missed as working the bill. Was not intentionally left off.
Representative Provenza.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a question about, so we put in the definition of emergency authorized, so in some vaccine that's not, that hasn't received full FDA approval, and then we have now the language it's going to allow for while we're in litigation or other states are in litigation, which supersede. So if the vaccine were to get the full FDA approval, which would then allow for businesses to mandate an FDA-approved vaccine to the full extent, what takes precedent? Thank you.
I'm not clear if that was on the amendment, but if it was and somebody would like to respond to it, that is Representative Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Happy to discuss at the break, but I believe with the representative more, I think that's a different issue. This is having to do with a federal mandate on vaccines. Emergency use authorization, whether or not that's subject to the checkbox process, that was the amendment earlier, but this is saying that the preemption kicks in if there's a federal mandate, once all legal challenges have been exhausted. That's what the section says. The amendment does not touch the word exhausted, and I'm sure we'll have interesting discussions in amendments two and three on that. Thank you.
Have we exhausted Division eight? Any further discussion of Division eight? Members, we're voting on Division eight. House Bill one thousand and one, standing committee amendment number one. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Division is not adopted. Division has been called for, and for Representative Williams, the division is, there's a member of body can call for division, those and I, the speaker, the chairman will say, all those in favor of the division, please rise. All those opposed? So the division has failed, twenty-five, twenty-six. Recall that these are majority of the quorum, majority of those in the chamber or online that participate in the vote. So it's not a majority of the members elected. So Division eight has not been adopted. Chairman Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move Division nine, standing committee amendment number one, House Bill one zero zero one. Members, Division nine is on page three of the amendment, lines thirteen through fifteen. It affects, has been sort of alluded to, page fifteen, lines ten. As when the bill was contemplated and drafted, the concept was let's get to the end of the budget session, let's find out what we don't know concerning federal mandates over the next couple of months, and then we'll be in back here in Cheyenne in February to deal with it. The discussion in committee was if we don't know anything more, or if there's nothing that we need to adjust, why don't we just let this roll until the end of the general session in two thousand and twenty-three, rather than have to revisit this again for no reason? Or if there are substantial changes and we need to make adjustments, we will bring them in the budget session. That's all it was, is why create the necessity to make sure we have to do something, even if we might not be in a position to have to do it? So that was a discussion, and that's why that was moved to your members.
Thank you, Chairman Greer. Any discussion? Any discussion on Division number nine? Discussion on Division number nine seeing none. All those in favor of the adoption of Division number nine, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Division is adopted. Division has been called for. All those in favor of Division nine, please rise. All those opposed, less than thirty-one. Thank you. Division is adopted. Chairman Greer, have we exhausted? Are we close to the end?
Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed.
I can go all day.
We will be, Mr. Chairman. This is the stack of amendments before us. Please proceed with Division ten.
Mr. Speaker, I move Division ten to standing committee amendment number one, House Bill one zero zero one. Members, it's on page three, line seventeen through twenty-five. It affects the language on page fifteen and sixteen. And I'll just try to explain this for you. This language concerning the effective date and the termination of employment and when this kicks in. When you read the original bill, you always walk away going, what's that mean exactly? Then you go back and you read it again, you go, okay, it means if your employment's affected or terminated after October one. Then you go back and read it again, you go, it doesn't really do that. Are we accomplishing our goal? So the amendment was brought to just try to bring some clarity to that, to make sure, so as we're talking about October thirty-one, is if your employment is affected by a mandate after October thirty-one, this law is in effect. Which then, let's be clear, is there's a pause for sixty days in this bill for it. But that's all it is. It's clarifying language. And I'll tell you, read to the first one, and I was assured by many people that Noah does, accomplishes that. We went back, worked through it, found language that was clear. So that's what the tenth division of this amendment does.
Thank you. Any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion? Any desire to divide the division? Further discussion seeing none. All those in favor of Division ten, House Bill one thousand and one, standing committee amendment. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. The division is adopted. Division ten is adopted. Chairman Greer, has that exhausted? Standing committee amendment.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, that is the standing committee amendment. And with that, I think we have another standing committee amendment from now the appropriations committee and then several more.
So members, just to clarify, as we went through ten divisions, all of the divisions were adopted except Division eight. I'm just clarifying with the chief clerk, that's what I had on my list, that's what she's going to turn in. So all of the divisions were adopted with the exception of Division eight. So next, give me just a moment to organize the stack of amendments that are before us. All right, we do have a standing committee amendment number two on House Bill one thousand and one. That is generally a appropriations committee amendment. Vice Chairman Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the House, if you'd turn to page thirteen, if I get my eyeballs on here.
Would you go ahead?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move House Standing Committee Amendment number two to House Bill one zero zero one.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. So on the testing requirement here, where we have, as a good speaker or the good chairman of appropriations pointed out, there's a a testing program that available to employers throughout the state that's currently implemented through the Department of Health. And as we looked at that and visited with the Department of Health Workforce Services, they felt that they could handle that financial burden as it was, and so we reduced that amount from ten million dollars to a thousand dollars, just understanding that it's a good intent to have a testing program available to employers. And that's really the essence of the appropriation.
Further discussion. Further discussion, I see Chairman Nicholas rising to the mic. Chairman Nicholas.
Thank you. And just for some further information about this. So yesterday, we took testimony from the Department of Health up through today, that the Department of Health has spent on behalf of employers and individuals in the state of Wyoming over one hundred million dollars of CARES Act and some ARPA dollars for testing. So our question to the good director is, after you read the bill, do we need to put ten million dollars in here, or will you make it, or is it already available? And he's, so what's happening is the Department of Health buys the test kits. So they have these literally warehoused, and those people who want them, they give them out for free. So an employer, as was explained to us, can contact the Department of Health. They have a stockpile of them, and as soon as they get a feeling of, and what they do is they try to get a feel for how many they need. And then they continue to order them to keep their warehouse of all of these, of the tests. And so he told us, he says, at least through the end of this session and probably the next session, they will have plenty of tests once this bill goes into effect, if it does, to do all the tests that's needed for the employers. And so that was the reason why we took out the dollar amount. Because literally, we've spent a hundred million, and there's a chance we'll spend another hundred million, not ten million, depending on how new variants come out and how the processes. And they'll continue to use the money they have for that. In addition to that, they have other sources to purchase these, not just the ARPA dollars. There's direct funds, there's various other federal programs where they use to assist to come up with that hundred million dollars. So that's the reason what we took the number down.
Thank you. We'll go with Chairman Greer, and then Madam Minority Floor Leader, Chairman Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Unfortunately, the committee didn't receive any of that testimony, which I don't quite understand why we didn't. But the practicality is, is if they're there for employers to be able to use, and they're available, then the section's not needed. I understand the constraints of appropriations committee, that all we can do is affect the appropriation and not the underlying policy of it. If this amendment passes, that's fine, but we're going to need another amendment and pull the whole section out because the whole section's not, the whole program's not necessary. I still would just wonder why we are here to address these issues, and this wasn't brought to our attention as we spent four, five hours of our life last night trying to work through these issues.
Thank you very much. Madam Minority Floor Leader, on the standing committee amendment number two.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On standing committee amendment number two, actually, I do have a question. And I think I'm going to encourage us to not adopt the standing committee amendment because of not only what the good chairman said, but also I have a concern as someone who has an employer across the hill where I was tested every week. I was obligated to be tested every week up until this fall. And then it was only going to be three percent of the population would be tested, and I haven't been tested since. And I don't have the opportunity to get tested if I want to. There were questions about, can't we just go back to the testing that was available? And the answer was, no. My employer did not have the capacity to do that testing. So supposedly, if the Department of Health has the tests, why didn't my employer know about it when in all honesty, many of us why didn't my employer know about it when, in all honesty, many of us wanted to go back to that weekly testing? So I am concerned about the tests getting out to where they're needed. And certainly, in my case, you had over ten thousand people who were regularly being tested who aren't right now. And so if there's some stockpiled tests, I know where they should go. And I also think other employers would be doing exactly the same thing. So before we pass this amendment, I'd like you to go and ask your employers, have you gotten tests from the DOH, or do you know if you can get them? Because my guess is, they don't know, and we're going to need to provide them. So let's hold on to this to make sure that those tests are available to employers who need them.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the good minority leader. I think the challenge there is not that they're not available, but getting the word out to the, the public to know that they, they are available. We, our testimony, as, as we heard it, is that they indeed are available. And as the good chairman of appropriations pointed out, that as they anticipate or, and increase, they will plan ahead to increase that inventory to make sure that the employers across the state do have them. I will just, I think that there's a couple of avenues Department of Health used. And I think those of you who are in the legal profession received notice through that association that represents you that those testing kits were available to, to your offices. And, and a lot of people, even though they only was a one practicing attorney and perhaps a clerk, were eligible for those. That's where I learned about it from. And there's, there's two of us in, in my office, and we were able, we, we could have got them, we didn't, but we could have got them. I think it's the communication and getting the information out, that they're available. And then the frequency of it is also a little bit flexible based on the entity that's doing the test, and how often do you want to do that, and how often. And, and what we heard is if you're in a, a critical healthcare provider, like a long-term care facility, that they would probably do that testing one or two times a week. Whereas maybe somebody that's not, that population would maybe do it once every two weeks. And that's kind of the rough figure that they shared with us, that they base the testing on. Doesn't mean that it has to be that way, but that's kind of what they planned. So again, the funding there is available, the resources are available. Can we, I, I think that the, the agency that oversees health, and the agency that oversees workforce services can, will probably work harder to get that information out. But would, again, there's no need to duplicate the, the appropriation.
Thank you very much. Chairman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. For the time being, I'm going to vote no on this amendment, somewhat along the ideas of the majority or the minority floor leader. And my thinking is, the department may have had what they consider a sufficiency for the time being. And, and I've been trying to do a little search on, I forget what the numbers were on how many employees across the nation are potentially to be affected by the large employer mandate, and then we've got the healthcare mandate. If we think back to, in the first, the pandemic first came out, and the challenges we had with getting protective equipment and that kind of thing. And just you read, you know, various legal hypotheses online, well, will the employer have to pay for it? Maybe the employee who is so obnoxious to refuse the vaccine will have to be paying for it. Or, I mean, I would really hate to see us run into a kind of a crunch of, maybe the price will quadruple. Who knows, once this goes into effect, if in fact it ever comes out. I, I think it would be far better to have this in there and just wait and find out a little bit more because it'll be a real pain three months from now if the price goes up everywhere. And suddenly the department says, oh, by the way, everybody's going to have to pay ten times as much as they did, and we haven't, we're not prepared.
Thank you. We've been exhausted, and now our new word might be, I won't even say respeed it. Chairman, Chairman Swanson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I, I think we're missing the point. This is, I'd strongly ask you about no on the amendment. I don't even understand why it's a thousand dollars. It's not the tests, it's administration of the tests. So if you look on lines twenty-one through twenty-three, it's implementing a program. So who are we talking about? These are all the businesses stuck in the middle who are doing their best to comply, that are going to be walking the line between the federal mandates of what is required on them and the state regulations of whatever we end up with. And these are the ones that are the large employers that are going to try to do everything right. And what are we going to do to help them trying to do everything right, comply with both federal and state law? We're going to help them, this is the portion where they either take the mandate vaccine, or they do the weekly routine tests. And so yes, if you have more than a hundred people, they're going to be going through tests pretty quick. The ones that choose to do the weekly testing. So it's a thousand dollars, just isn't quite enough, right? This is where it goes to workforce services, where we're helping our large businesses specifically with the requirement to test every week. And hey, maybe we can have a program where we could even, you know, hire an entity, public-private partnership to go out and administer the test, right? Because this is a huge mandate on private business, say, hey, you got to test two hundred employees every week with this test. And then you have to do all the processing, distribution, delivery, you name it, right? It's not just the test itself, it's administration of the entire program. And it's going to take a lot of work and a lot of money to comply with that federal mandate for the people who are trying to do it right. So ten million's probably a little high, I'll give you that. But it's going to take a whole lot more than a thousand dollars for administration, even if we have the abundance of tests.
Thank you. Go with Vice Chairman Larson.
So, Mr. Chairman, as we have the, the two directors, as we visited with both agencies, one in this bill that deals with workforce services, that is intended to implement the testing program and the, the director of the department who oversees health that has an existing program implemented. The question was, so then how would you do this? And the one that oversees workforce services said, we'll go to the agency that oversees health, get the kits, and administer it as they do, and make sure that it's done. We have the funding in place through the one, the two agencies are going to work together, is what we heard. They can administer it as it is, under the funding that currently exists. And there's enough money there through, through the ARPA funds and what they have left in the, in the CARES money to fund this. We're getting, we're getting the same thing done, it's just that they don't need this appropriation in this section of the bill to get it done. And we left a thousand dollars in there, maybe that was the mistake, I don't know. But we, we aren't missing the boat here. They're, they are able to administer it. So I just encourage you to vote aye.
Thank you. Representative Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, following on my good colleague from committee number two. We left a little teeny bit of money in here because if this were to go through the agency that is tasked with this, carrying this out, would have had an unfunded mandate had we taken all the money out of this. So this allows that agency to work with the agency that's actually doing this work, has been doing this work for the last eighteen months, to make sure that they can get it done and not leave that, that agency that's listed here as an unfunded mandate. I think earlier in our debate, the good chairman of the standing committee who heard this bill really identified it best, this section should be eliminated from the bill as these activities are already taking place. And so hopefully, that good colleague will bring the amendment in the second reading to just eliminate this section.
Thank you. Chairman Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And ladies and gentlemen, I might also point out that in our discussions with both of those agencies, the, the, the family services, workforce services component told us, they simply do not have the manpower to, to, to enforce or to even put this program together. You may recall, we've cut several numerous positions out of that agency last year because of the budget cuts. So whichever agency takes this over, they will have to use probably part of the, of the funds that are currently available through ARPA or through an, an A B eleven process in order to effectuate this added component to getting these test kits delivered to the employers as they're being requested. And, and as my understanding is, that they're, they're kind of waiting to see how this bill comes out, and how, and then they'll, but one of our priorities was to also change it from the workforce services to the health department to administer it because they're more capable of doing it, and they've been doing it for the last eighteen months, one, one way or the other. So that, that was also the, the consensus after our discussions yesterday.
Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, thank you, and all due respect to my fellow members on approach, or my old fellow members on approach. It, it seems to me that we'll come back in, in a budget session, and we'll appropriate all of these ARPA dollars over again. So really, we're just talking about this intervening time. So if ten million were to sit in a, in a bucket, in a coffee can for this purpose until the next session, are we really harming anything? That's what I want to understand is, is if we have it there, is, is there harm in that? Because we will override this in any budget process when we actually expend all one billion dollars or one whatever billion of the ARPA money. So my question is, does it harm sitting in this coffee can until the next session?
Thank you, from our recovered appropriations member. And now to another recovered appropriations member, Madam Minority Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm not sure one ever recovers. But I'd like to go back to what the good chairman of appropriations just said, and have us think about that. The argument was, regardless if this is a good program, there isn't the staff to administer it. Hang on for a second. If this is a good program, this is a program that's designed to help our small businesses, to help our employers get testing out to their employees. We should do everything possible in order to facilitate it, not say, we can't administer it. That's our job. If we need to appropriate and have a couple of more AWAC positions in order to get that funding out and make sure it happens, we should do it. And also know, right now, I've been to two national meetings where I was given rapid tests. One of them I could do myself. It was simple. I did it myself. I did it in my room. All right, you don't need nasal swabs these days, or you don't need others to do nasal swabs these days. Okay, if this is a good program, and I think we agree that it is, it is going to put out to our employers testing for their employees at no cost to them. We should do it, and we should facilitate it. So now, very strongly, on and against this amendment?
Thank you. Representative Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to urge an aye vote on this. And simply, we're, we're talking about the thousand dollars or ten million dollars, and that they're pretty big disparity there. But look just a, a, a page back and follow what this appropriation is going to do and when it expires. And if you follow it into the next page, it says that this expires on March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two, which is basically what we heard just a little bit ago, that we really need to get this up and going until we can get ourselves into the next session. And allow the Appropriations Committee to have these discussions with the two departments that are in discussion right now, and actually figure out what needs to be done. This is kind of one of those symptoms when we call ourselves into a special session in such a hurry, that this wasn't on the radar for them, either one of these two agencies. So if we take this ten million dollars and we plug this in right now, that takes away that ten million dollars from them being able to look at this come the rest of the, the budget hearing process in just a few weeks. It locks that ten million dollars up and says, no, that's set aside, we can't touch that. If we put in a thousand dollars, they've got the capability of going in there and doing what they need to do. The, the chief executive has the power and the availability to be eleven monies as they see fit. We're not running into a situation right now where this is a requirement to have ten million dollars to stand up a program and keep it float. This bill is a stopgap between now and the end of March. Between now and the end of March, we're going to be back in here debating this all over again. So I think it's actually very incumbent upon us to be judicious with our money and say, let's just get them what they need to do for the time being, and let appropriations do the rest of the work with the other two agencies that are mentioned. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Chairman Greer.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Just real quick point of clarification, and I could understand why it got lost. But Division number seven on the Minerals Committee Standing Amendment moved that date to October one, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you for that. Chairman Greer, Vice Chairman Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, and I think there might have been some confusion on the, the discussion that we had in appropriations that the good chairman referred to. In this bill, there's going to be some requirements of the department that handles workforce services in administrating an oversight of a lot of this in addition to this testing area. And so we agree. And the question was, are you going to need help? She says, I may. We says, okay, let us know, because we need to make sure that you do. We're not trying to restrict them, we're trying to say, keep us posted, let us know what you need, and we'll make sure that you get the help you need, was what the, the good chairman was saying. We're not, in no way trying to squeeze and say, you can't have any help in doing this. And then, because it probably will take some extra help, not just in administrating the testing, but in the other requirements that they're required to do if this bill should pass. Then to the good majority floor leader, we're just trying to comply, to answer your question, we are just trying to comply with the will of this body when they say they don't like coffee cans. And so we've elected not to park it in a coffee can and keep it there so everybody can see where it's at. And so that's the reason we've kind of kept that out where it's there. We've avoided the, the coffee can temptation, and, and so again, I'd ask for your support.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Chairman Nicholas.
Thank you. I'm sorry to beat this dead coffee can, but just, just one more comment. So the, the good chair of Minerals, you know, he said, well, why didn't the Department of Health come and tell us this yesterday when we are working these bills? And, and I, I didn't know the answer to that, but as I, now I do, I sat down, you know, there were about five or six different committee meetings going on yesterday. And, and it's very unfortunate that they didn't. And that's the problem with this particular format that we're in, because there are a lot of information, a lot of stuff going on. And, and I, hopefully, over the lunch hour, we can get the director here to have this discussion with the good chairman so that we can clarify this and get everyone a comfort zone on it. But we did have, we called the director over, and we had the other director of family service or workforce services also testify in front of us yesterday as we went through this. And we had the time to do it because that's the only thing we had to work on all afternoon. So that's why we got all the information from, from these respective parties. Thanks.
Thank you. So members, we are on standing committee amendment. First reading, standing committee number two, further discussion, further discussion. All right, we're voting on standing committee number two. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Those opposed, no. All those in favor, please rise. Thank you. All those opposed? More than nineteen. Thank you. I think the, the voice vote on, so the amendment is not adopted. Standing committee amendment number two is not adopted. So I think the indication, the, the vigor in your voices on that voice vote indicates where we are in our day. And I think our energy level has reached a point that, Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the committee of the whole begs leaving, rise and sit again until one o'clock P M.
So members, you've heard the motion. It's an hour and a half for lunch. We have, by my count, by currently in front of me, five committee of the whole amendments on this same bill. And then we have a subsequent bill that has multiple amendments as well. So we have So we have continuing a full, um, afternoon of debate. Or potentially a full afternoon of debate. And so, um, our lunch hour is not going to be two hours, it's going to be one hour. And I'll just, uh, make a further comment that our workload is the heavy end of this. The bills that we have are the heavy end of this at this moment. The other end of the hallway, um, has adjourned until tomorrow. They are, have, have, um, taken care of the bills that they had before them. So we are going to, but we chose to do this work. We will continue to do this work and we will reconvene at one o'clock. Any announcements, any announcements, any privileges from the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor, the majority floor motion, floor leader's motion to rise and sit again at one P M, please say aye. Those opposed, no. The motion is adopted. We will reconvene at one P M.